I'd like to call to order the August 1st meeting of the Marietta City Council. Welcome back. Would our city clerk please call, roll call for determination of a quorum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Warren?
Present.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Present.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stone?
Here.
Mayor De Forest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Would you please go over the closed session agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on two items. Conference with labor negotiator, the City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with the City Manager, the City Attorney, and the City's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with management and confidential. The City Council will also meet in conference with real property negotiator, will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8 to enable the City Council to consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property, Olive Wood Professional Building 24620 Jefferson Avenue, Marietta, California, with Alfonso Hicks of Medical Asset Management. The City's real property negotiators, the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Director of Economic Development, and the City Attorney will seek direction from the City Council regarding the price and terms for this property. That concludes closed session items.
Thank you so much. We're going into recess into closed session, and we will reconvene at 5:00 PM for National Good evening. We are reconvening our August 1st meeting of the Marietta City Council from our closed session. Roll call. Madam City Clerk?
I would like to note for the record that all members were present during closed session. Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Mayor Pro Tem Stone?
Here.
Mayor De Forest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Holliday who were present in closed session.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Now we'll recess to National Night Out hosted at Town Square Park, and then we will reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Good evening. We are reconvening our, the August 1st meeting of the Marietta City Council from National Night Out. That was a great event. It was quite a lot of fun. Before we get started, I want to let you all know that at 6:45 or a time sooner thereafter, we will hold a public hearing on the City Council District for Marietta Hills Specific Plan. So Madam City Attorney, could you please provide a report from closed session?
The City Council met in closed session on two items. The first was to confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was to confer with its real property negotiator regarding property located at 24620 Jefferson Avenue pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Again, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Would the city clerk please call, roll for determination of a quorum?
Councilmember Warren?
Present.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stone?
Here.
Mayor De Forest?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we have Bryce Bishop from the Church of Latter Day Saints to do our invocation, but I'd like to also invite him forward, and if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance as well, we would be greatly appreciated of that. So if you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Our Father in Heaven, we bow before thee this evening in humble gratitude to be together in this City Council meeting. We're so grateful for this great city of Marietta that we have to live in. We're grateful for the members of the City Council, for the leaders, for the service members who serve diligently in this city. We pray for them. We pray for their families, for their loved ones, and all those who are present this evening. We pray that thy Spirit be upon each one of us as members of this wonderful community, that as we speak, as we share our thoughts, as we discuss business this evening, that we can do so in a manner of love, unity, peace, and understanding. We pray for the members of the community who struggle. We pray that as, as members of this community, we can look for ways in which we can help We pray for the business items that are going to be discussed tonight, and for those who have input and items of discussion, we pray that it will be done in a manner of civility and love, that we can work to build bridges of understanding, and work to continue to grow this great community. We pray that we can be peacemakers in our individual lives and with others around us, that we can strive to emulate Jesus Christ in all that we do, and these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you so much, Bishop Bryce. Are there any changes to the agenda? Oh, I'd like to call for a motion a second, seeing none. And then I'll vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. I'll move to our Madam City Manager for administrative update.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a number of fun and exciting announcements tonight. So first, I'd like to wish Marietta PD happy 31st birthday, for those who may not know. So in June of 1991, the Marietta Public Safety Advisory Council recommended to the City Council that we start our own police department, and the vision was to have 33 officers and 20 professional staff, including dispatchers. The population of Marietta at the time was just a little over 23,000 people. We built our police station in 2002, and 31 years later, we have 109 officers, 26 professional staff, 39 dispatchers, and over 50 volunteers, including explorers and three chaplains. So while we have grown exponentially, the values are the same as that very first group that started us off, so happy birthday. Next in the list of good news is every year, the Los Angeles Times has a competition, the best of. And so if you recall back in April, we were nominated to be the best city in San Gabriel Valley slash Inland Empire, and so it's official, we are the best city in that region. So in the fall, they will be having a survey for the best city in general, so we'll let all of you know so you can vote often. And last but not least, our library, as you know, has just been phenomenal, and the library's been nominated by Congressman Darrell Issa for the 2024 National Medal for Museum and Library Services Award, which is the highest award that a library can receive. The nomination deadline is September 1st, and they won't announce the winner until spring, but send positive thoughts, and I'm sure we'll do very well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all that positive news. I absolutely love it. And moving on to governing body commissions and committee reports, the city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the opportunity for City Council members to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, and commission committees or board meeting attendance. Report shall not exceed three minutes. The city clerk shall use a timer. Councilmember Warren?
Thank you. We may have been dark in July, but it looks like I was pretty busy. We'll go back to June. I did attend RTA Commission Meeting on behalf of our mayor. She was unable to attend, so as her alternate, I did attend, and I got the cookie. She didn't get it, so that was mine. On the 29th, I attended the Western River City Riverside Council of Governments, WRCOG, General Assembly Member with the rest of my colleagues. On July the 12th, the RCTC meeting did meet, and there is no reportable action. Along with my fellow councilman, Mr. Holliday, conducted interviews for the Transaction and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Measure T Committee, which we will be discussing this evening. And I also met with colleague member Holliday and staff to discuss amphitheater request for proposal at the Town Square Park Amphitheater. That concludes my report of meetings. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle?
I have no updates. A nice month off, thank you.
Thank you. I would concur. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you. In addition to the stuff that Councilmember Warren and I attended, I also attended WRCOG's Western Regional Council of Government Southwest Zone Executive Committee meeting, where I'm happy to announce that they're allocating a little over $2 million for the Keller Road interchange for us, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tem Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On 6/22, I attended the Southwest Riverside County Elected, Women's Elected Leader Collaborative, where the discussion is higher education for our region. 6/28, I attended a special City Council meeting, and on 6/29, I attended the Western Riverside Council of Government General Assembly meeting. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And RTA and RCHCA for myself was both dark in the month of July, so I had a very nice month off, and I did attend with Mayor Pro Tem Stone, the Women's Elected Collaborative as well. So moving on to public comments of non-agendized items, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. She was going to National Night Out, so if I see her return, I'll... Connie.
She was cooling down from being at National.
Yeah. I thought you were still there.
Good evening again. Nice to see you back. I have a couple of things to report on and one ominous complaint. Anyway, as you know, in front of you, you'll see something that says, "Lays and Locomotives." This is put on by Amy Edgeworth, who I didn't know was going to be here tonight. She's right there in the red t-shirt. She's working very hard to bring back a train to Marietta, and she's working on grants, and she's made a lot of progress. So tickets are still available. It's going to be a fun thing to do. This Thursday night is our market night, and we are going to have a booth with Meet the Mayor again, so I think you've all met her, but anyway, she's going to be there. And we are also having a contest, which I kind of put it on a little late, but as you know or don't know, this city was named after Juan Marietta, who was a sheep rancher, and he sold 14,000-plus acres to the township of Temecula in 1885. That's who our town is named after. But before that, in 1848, there was a bandit named Joaquin Marietta, and he used to rob the Butterfield stage and give the gold to the farmers and ranchers around here. So he's back in town, guys. I've seen him. He's sneaking around, and the kids are going to have a chance to find the bandit at our market. And then whoever wins, our wonderful mayor is going to present them with a prize. And we are going to give, start giving cash prizes, which we hope will be used for, to start education funds. That's what we're going to encourage, but we can't control it. Okay, the Arts Council has a new stage, yay. So we got that because we got a nice little grant from Washington's office. And now, because I'm not, don't have much time, I'm to my complaint. I know that several of you already know about this. I'm sure almost everybody is aware of it, but it's getting to be a really serious thing down in downtown Marietta, and that's e-bikes. And I know you can't just necessarily do anything about it, but I want you to know, I've seen almost two or three accidents. I've almost run over a kid just because I happened to look twice. They just ride their bikes, doing wheelies, going through the intersections. They do not stop at all. And just the other, that was a couple of weeks ago. The other day, I was just coming up on B, and I was on Washington, turning onto B. Car was stopped in front of me, waiting for me to turn. The kid, the same kid, I think, came up behind him, doing a wheelie, almost hit her car, went around and rushed through the intersection. So what I'm announcing tonight is, when I kill one of these kids, because if I don't run over them, I'm going to just go strangle them, please, it's not my fault. It's their fault, and it's their parents' fault, because the kids are not paying any attention to any of the traffic laws. I don't know what can be done about it. I just wanted to bring it up public, so you'll know that that's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's just a downtown market night kind of night. Also, what Ms. Connie said, 100% true. It is very problematic. I live on that side of town. I see it often. So this is Rex, T-Rex. He has a big head and little arms. If it weren't for the downtown market night, I wouldn't have Rex in my life. I met a woman in passing who happens to rescue these guys. We've become really good friends, and Rex is now an emotional sport animal, which in my world, as a psychotherapist, is a big deal, because this guy is on his way to become a therapy dog. And I think what's important to point out is, I think that that market night is probably the coolest thing that's happened to Marietta in a long time. I live near Old Marietta. I live in West Marietta, and it's not just West Marietta that, I think that that event has been life-changing for, but for our whole town. And so we truly are connected by community and wild little gremlins like this who want to get away and go run. But I just wanted to come up here and speak tonight about just how cool the market is and how much my family enjoys it, and how grateful we are for it, because Marietta's newest resident gets his very bougie dog food at Top Dog, a family-owned pet shop here in Marietta, and he goes to a vet right here in Marietta, and he has lots of other little Frenchie friends right here in Marietta. So I also suggest making him Marietta's new mascot, just saying. He's cute. How can you say no? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and bye, Mr. Rex.
John Joel Singh.
I know. That's a tough act to follow, sir.
Didn't bring a dog. Anyways, I have to apologize to Ms. Crane here. I put some documentation here over my findings on this subject, and I actually put your name as crap. I don't know what's in my mind here. I'm here tonight to discuss the French Valley Airport and what's been going on here recently, and of course, I can't get my computer up and iPad up and running. I've been working with Ron Holliday about two months ago, so I'm going to wing it a little bit. Come on. So I noticed last couple of years, the air traffic above our place over here by Coal Canyon School has become ridiculous. I know the mayor is about three miles on the same hill. We got a pattern going this way and this way. I counted a couple of weeks ago, 60 flyovers in five hours. I counted in four days, I counted an average of 3.2 planes coming over. I talked with Ron, I've talked to everybody involved, all the way up to Darrell Issa's office, who's our rep, and Ken Calvert, where the airport is, and I've documented everything over here and what my suggestion is, based on the facts that I've come up with. That danger, that airport is dangerous. I told Ron that after I did an investigation and talked to various people here, and I said there's going to be accidents. There's going to be more accidents. I guarantee you that. I'll put my life on it here. The problem that's happened here is that airport is improperly run, it's dangerous, it's a hobbyist airport, and it's got to stop. I don't want the planes over my house anymore. I've gone to every source, FAA doesn't care. We own 685 feet above our own properties. The planes have to be 1,000 feet up. Virtually none of them are. We've seen as many as four in one little area, and it's just ridiculous. So what I've suggested to do here is, first of all, after the two airplane crashes, right after we talked about how bad things are going to get there, that killed six people, killed another fellow, and injured three of his kids, and the one is still in hospital in San Diego, the airport needs to be shut down. But what happened was, I started getting texts. I do business in five different countries. I started getting texts out of China relating to the city of Marietta, and they said, "What the heck is going on there with those airplane crashes?" Heard it out of Canada, seen it on the New York Times, and no one, oh gee, I'm out of time already, no one said anything about this. And we're in damage control, and you need to get somebody out there, public-wise, and stop the bleeding, because these people, it's going to cost me in pockets, but it's going to cost you future businesses and everything else like this. So I put my recommendations in there, three points. The second point is put an ordinance in here.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate you. We do have your...
Yes.
Yes, your letter as well.
Please, before another accident happens, because there is going to be another.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
That concludes non-agenda public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar, approval of items 1 through 8. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstaining from a vote? I see none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, and then we, could we all vote?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to our public hearings. Marietta Hills Specific Plan, City Council Voting District staff, may we please have a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item actually is slated for 6:45, and pursuant to the Elections Code, I must hold it at that time or soon time thereafter.
Perfect.
So if I could kindly ask you to go to the next public hearing?
Let's move to the next. All right, moving on to discussion item number 10, or public hearing number 10, Speed Zone Ordinance Update. Staff, you guys were faster.
You knew it was speedy.
Well, how appropriate. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Jeff Hitch, city engineer. I'm here to, we're here to discuss tonight the speed ordinance update. Let me bring that up. So the speed ordinance update is, is a routine item that we do. Because of the California Vehicle Code, we have to update the speed ordinance on a regular basis, and so, and we generally do this about every two or three years. The last one was done in 2021. And the reason why this has to be done on a, on a continuous basis is if, is if the speed limits that we have that are enacted by ordinance timeout. It used to be, it's between seven and 10 years is how long you can keep a speed limit updated. There's been a recent assembly bill, Assembly Bill 43, that allows that now to be extended to 14 years at the, under the direction of the, of the city's traffic engineer, or the recommendation based on engineering guidance. It can be extended for up to 14 years before a new survey is completed. And I'm going to have Mr. Brian Stevenson here next to me go over all the details associated with what's been done here, and then provide you a little bit of education about the way speed ordinance or speed limits are set on a routine basis. So, so with that, I'll go ahead and pass this over to Brian and, and take it from there.
Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll be doing the presentation for the Speed Zone Ordinance Update. For the setting of speed limits to be enforceable on a public street, they need to follow certain requirements of the California Vehicle Code and the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, commonly referred to as the MUTCD. Speed limits shall be set based on engineering and traffic surveys, which are typically based on radar. They shall be set at the nearest five-mile increment of the 85th percentile speed of free-flowing traffic. And then if a reduction from that five mile an hour increment of 85th percentile speed is necessary, then we can reduce it by five miles an hour if appropriate justifications identified. That would be, for instance, if there's a high number of pedestrians in the area, if there's unimproved roadways, or if there's a lack of sidewalks in the area. So speed limits need to be reevaluated every five years minimum, based on the requirements of the CVC and MUTCD. They can be extended to seven years if certain criteria is met, such as officer training on radar and proof of calibration of the radar equipment. Up until this Assembly Bill 43 was passed, we could extend these surveys to 10 years if there've been no significant change, if there've been no changes to the roadway characteristics. With Assembly Bill 43, if a licensed engineer reviews each of these locations, we can extend it to 14 years and keep that survey valid and enforceable. Speed limits also need to be set for new roadways as they're constructed. This latest update analyzed 28 street segments. We performed traffic volume counts, radar surveys, and collision data analysis between January and April of this year. 23 of the segments were existing segments that we looked at, and then five were added to the ordinance. I'll get into those a little bit more. The five new roadways that were, that we're adding to the ordinance are Hunter Road from, it used to end near Cailloudale Amore, then it was extended to the west. So Hunter Road from Golden Eagle Ave to Cailloudale Amore, the posted speed limit would be 35 miles an hour. Meadowlark Lane between Keller Road and Whitewood Road, the posted speed limit would be 35. New Clay Street between B and Ivy, the posted speed limit would be 30. And then Whitewood, going from Marietta Hot Springs to the south to Isaac Street, would be 30. And then from Isaac Street to Cailloudale, 30 miles an hour. And these were based on the radar surveys that were performed and the criteria outlined in the MUTCD and the California Vehicle Code. Of the 23 segments that we surveyed, we looked at 21 of them and said, "These were about to expire in 10 years." Now with Assembly Bill 43, we can extend those to 14 years. These 21 segments that we reviewed didn't have any significant changes in traffic volumes or geometry since they were analyzed previously, so the city engineer will be able to extend those to 14 years, and they'll be valid for the next four more years. There's two segments that will be decreasing, and they are, my changes didn't get in here, sorry about that. The two segments that are decreasing are Holstead Avenue between Adams and Jefferson, and that's currently 30 miles an hour, and it's going to go to 25 miles an hour. There was a desire in the past to have that 25 miles an hour. It was never justified as 25, because it's not technically a residence district per the vehicle code. We have the survey that supports 25 now, so we are recommending to post that at 25 miles an hour. And then the other one is Lemon Street between Jefferson and Washington. That's currently 35 miles an hour, and that one would decrease to 30 miles an hour. There's been some new construction in the area in the last few years, which is why we took a closer look at that one, and with the number of pedestrians in that area, a lot of school-age pedestrians in that area, we took that five mile an hour decrease. The speed survey came in somewhere around, or to get us to 35, but then we additionally reduced it another five miles an hour to get it to 30. So with that, our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing introducing the... So with that, our recommendation is to conduct a public hearing introducing the, an ordinance regarding changes in state law speed limits entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California, amending Chapter 10 dot 16 of Title 10 of the Marietta Municipal Code Regarding Changes to Speed Limits on Certain Streets in the City of Marietta pursuant to State Law." With that, I would be happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you so much. I don't see anybody up on my public speaking, so I'll start. With respect to the New Clay, the proposed 30 miles per hour speed limit and Ivy, New Clay and Ivy, isn't that a pretty high density residential? And isn't that a, a walkway to students heading to Thompson and to Marietta Valley High School?
So I wouldn't typically classify that as a high density of volume of pedestrian traffic there, but I will give you a little bit more information on that from our speed survey. Our speed, our speed survey came in at 37 miles an hour, so we're allowed to reduce that to the nearest five miles an hour, which is 35. From that, we took the additional reduction, an additional five miles an hour based on criteria in MUTCD and the documented conditions were unimproved roadway and no sidewalk. So we reduced it as much as we can to, for it to be an enforceable speed limit.
Okay. Because it seems to me that, that area has 25 mile an hour speed limits on some of the other streets that are running parallel.
There are some. I don't believe New Clay met the criteria for residence district. A residence district is within a quarter mile, 13 or more homes fronting within a quarter mile on one side of the street, or a total of 16 homes fronting along both sides of the street in the quarter mile. And it, it didn't meet the classification of residence district, so we had to survey it to get an enforceable speed limit.
Okay. Thank you so much for clarifying that and.
I would just add, the, there's a, there's a couple of houses that front on New Clay. There's really not that many is, is kind of the scenario. I think there's a lot of residential houses that are in close proximity to New Clay, but they don't front New Clay and that, that becomes what defines whether or not it's a, it can become a residential street, a certain number of homes that front that street.
Right. It doesn't have the 13 homes fronting it, so therefore, okay.
Right, exactly.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any questions? Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Stone?
Thank you. Brian, can you go back to the slide that, that listed Whitewood, please? Okay, so as far as your survey, has Whitewood been affected by this survey and has, have we lowered the, the amount of, you have, thank you, the speed limit? You have Whitewood and Marietta Hot Springs at 30 miles an hour. You got Whitewood and Isaac to Cali Real, 30. Were the, and then you have Meadowlark, Keller Road to Whitewood. Were these surveyed?
Yes, they were surveyed.
And did you already lower the speed limit?
So we lowered the speed limit on Whitewood from Isaac to Cailloudale, taking that additional five miles an hour. Between Marietta Hot Springs and Isaac, the 85th came in to 31. We reduced that to 30. That's a pretty wide section of road right there. That's a somewhat typical section of road there. Where it gets narrower is where it, it jogs to the east and then south from Isaac to Cailloudale. That's a much narrower there. That one came in at 36 miles an hour, so we reduced it to 35, then the additional of 30. So.
So you've only reduced it by one?
By one additional five mile an hour increment in the, for the Cailloudale to Isaac Street. And the reason for that was unimproved roadway, no sidewalk on west side of the road.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand this. You, you only decreased it by one mile an hour?
Well, we have to round to the nearest 85th percent, or to the nearest five mile an hour increment.
Okay.
So from 31, we've rounded to 30. That's the nearest five mile, or five mile an hour increment. Then we took that additional reduction based, of five miles an hour, based on no sidewalk and an improved roadway.
Okay, okay. And the reason why I bring this up, as you know, I'm not sure you know, but we know that there have been several deaths on Whitewood in, in the last year in addition to the high rate of speeding on Whitewood. And if that is all we are allowed to reduce by law, then it, I guess it is what it is. But if we're able to decrease it, I would encourage that.
We, we've reviewed this, I say, I think quite extensively to see what would be an enforceable speed limit and what we anticipate would be a solid speed survey in a court of law. If we, if we reduced it by five miles an hour and our justification didn't hold up, then those could get tossed.
Okay.
We are familiar, if I can just add, with all, with the collision history along Whitewood Road. And the city's currently undergoing an LRSP, a local road safety plan. There's a consultant work, looking at all the streets in the city to, to analyze the highest concentration of injury and fatality accidents. From there, there will be recommendations made for improvements along those roadways. And we'll be able to use that document to help secure grant funding and identify improvements along Whitewood Road. And we've been discussing some improvements along Whitewood Road that we, we think might be very good for staff and the council to consider in the, in the near future.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem, and Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the section of Whitewood Road that is getting the new speed limits doesn't have a posted speed limit currently.
That's correct.
And that's the section that's south of Marietta Hot Springs Road.
Yes.
So the, the area that has a lot of the fatalities and stuff is north of Marietta Hot Springs Road.
Yes, those were surveyed a couple of times in the past and those did have the five mile an hour reduction.
Yeah, I saw that in your, in your full table. My question is, what experience do you have in the actual speed once the speed limits are lowered from what the 85th percentile? Do you see behaviors change? I know we're talking about enforceability, that's, that's one issue. And I know our police department did a really good job last month of enforcing the posted speed limit on Whitewood and educating a lot of drivers. But in general, do you see, when we do these five mile an hour reductions, do you see people changing their behaviors without additional enforcement?
I don't know that I have the, the actual data that would be able to back that up, but when we do things like this, we have radar signs that we rotate through the city and we place on streetlight poles. And we'll, we try to rotate them every month, two months, three months, just so they don't stay there and people get used to them. We have the ability to download data from those. Those are recording 24/7. And those, I would say the majority of people are complying with those. There are still people that see those signs and try to see how fast they can get their car going.
It's a video game.
Yeah.
See what, get the high score.
Where we, where we reduce these speeds and then try to install other additional engineering improvements, I think that's a benefit to help slow this down and assist the officers with enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday and Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me how many different speed limits are posted from one end of Whitewood to the other end of Whitewood?
Two currently, and there will be three. So we'll have 30 from Cailloudale to Hot Springs.
Okay.
Then I believe it's 40 up until Los Alamos, and then 45 north of Los Alamos to the city limits.
Does that become confusing to those driving that road when it's not a consistent speed limit?
Well, there's, there's different roadway characteristics of the road.
Okay.
So the road gets narrower as you drive to the south. There's a narrower section of road from, it's 76 feet wide at the northern end of the city. Between Los Alamos and Marietta Hot Springs, it's roughly 64 feet. There's some sections that are 60. And then right now, south of Marietta Hot Springs, it's even narrower than that.
Correct.
So when you add decreased geometry as well as curvature to the road, I think drivers are expected to understand that there may be changes in speed, in speeds.
And with that, I know that the state has requirements of how many signs are posted for the speed limit. Will we be able to make sure that our motorists that are driving that road know when the speed limit does change so they can alter their driving habits?
Yeah, we post them at the beginning and end of the speed zone in both directions, as well as after major street intersections.
Right.
So if there's, if there's five residential intersections in between two major intersections, those are people that come in and out of development during the day, turn onto a major road and come back. So they're passing one of the other signs. We don't pass, we don't post them at every single street just because of sign inundation.
I understand. Okay. Thank you so much for your answer. I appreciate it.
All right, seeing no other questions from my colleagues? All right, Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item? Oops, sorry. I need to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony now regarding this item?
Seeing none.
All right, well then I'll just close it.
Thank you.
All right. City Council, any discussion from the dais? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion in a second. And we all vote?
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you so very much. Well, it looks like we're going to move, moving on to item number 11 and not go to our open public hearing yet for item number nine, because it is not 6:45 yet. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
That's correct.
Okay. 2022 delinquent refuse service charges. Are there any members of the city council that wish to abstain, recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we will move on to a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight before you is a public hearing for the placement of 2022 delinquent trash service charges onto the 2324 tax roll and to adopt a resolution for that to be filed with the county tax collector. The city's franchise agreement requires our solid waste service provider, Waste Management, to provide services regardless of status of payment to residential service accounts. In exchange, the city holds a public hearing annually to levy unpaid fees onto the tax roll. Waste management covers the costs associated with this process and the city withholds 10% of funds collected. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution and direct that the delinquent refuse charges be placed on the property tax bill for collection. That concludes my presentation. Waste management is also here for, available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. All right. So moving on to, since our presentation is done, we'll take council members' questions. And I will start with Councilwoman Warren.
Thank you. I do have one question. Does Waste Management at any time are they able, or do they at any time come back to Marietta to pay, to pay those delinquent accounts?
Waste Management doesn't.
So they do not? So once it goes on the tax roll, it's now?
It stays on the property tax roll.
Okay.
And then if, if it's not paid, it becomes a lien on the property.
Correct. So, so Marietta is not held responsible for those delinquent payments at any time?
No.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that. Thank you.
I'll take any other council member question. Seeing none, this is the time and place for the public hearing on the delinquent refuse charges tax roll. I will now open the public hearing. Has the city clerk received any written correspondence on this matter?
At this time, we have not.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the council on this matter or hand in a protest or correspondence? If so, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Seeing none.
Thank you. Any deliberation? I'd like to close the public hearing. Any discussion from the dais? I'd like to call for a motion and a second. And a vote? All right.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Madam City Clerk, I think it is time. All right.
Wow, that was well timed.
I know, that was perfect. Yes, it was planned. Okay, moving on to the public hearing for Marietta Hills specific plan, city council voting district. Staff, will may, could we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Kimberly Ramirez will be actually presenting, although I may need her assistance on what is showing on the screen right now. She's got it. Sorry, Kimberly. The public hearing was, was noticed and it provided the option to request Spanish translation prior to the start of the meeting. No requests were submitted. And I will move it on to Kimberly.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Before I begin, I would like to note that the item before you is a procedural elections code hearing. So to begin with, the city council did go through the redistricting process in 2021 slash 2022, where a total of eight public hearings were held. At the end of the process, the city council adopted ordinance number 572-22, which updated the city council district voting boundaries to what we have today. And the city is actually not scheduled to reevaluate the district boundaries until the next census in 2030. But due to the annexation of the Marietta Hills specific plan, the city must adopt the annexed territory into the nearest district boundaries without reworking the entirety of the map. The annexed territory is adjacent to two city council districts and is located east of the 215 freeway. The 215 freeway, apart from being a freeway, actually serves as an existing landmark between districts. Following the Fair Maps Act, which provides the process and criteria for evaluating and adjusting boundaries, staff recommends that the territory be adopted into city council district one due to its location and the undeveloped nature of the territory. So the next steps after this hearing will include a public workshop hosted by the city clerk department on Friday, August 11th at 6:00 PM to allow community members to provide input. Following that will be the introduction of an ordinance adopting revised boundaries on August 15th, and then followed by the adoption of that ordinance on September 5th. And once the city council has a final action, the city clerk will notify the registrar of voters so that they may finalize boundaries for the November 2023 election. The city of Marietta will not have an election until 2024. City staff and I are available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. All right, are there any council member questions on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item?
Seeing none.
Close the public hearing. City council discussion? All right, seeing none. I'd just like to thank you, staff. The public hearing has been held and public testimony has been taken. Is there anything else, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's nothing else, just a reminder that we will be hosting a public workshop on Friday, August 11th. Although city hall is closed, the city clerk's office will be here open for purposes of the workshop only here at Chambers.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. So moving on to discussion items. Appoint the Transaction and Use Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Staff, may we have a staff report? And I'm going to turn that over instead of staff, I'm going to turn that over to Councilwoman Warren.
Pardon me, Madam Mayor. I'm going to introduce the item and then Councilmember Warren will take over. My apologies.
No worries. I just handed it over way too soon.
That's okay.
Yes.
So in 2018, the citizens of Marietta approved the Measure T, a transaction and use tax. Shortly thereafter, as required by Measure T, a transaction and use tax citizens oversight committee was created. The committee's purpose is to review revenue and expenditure reports prepared by staff as it relates to the receipt and the use of the transactions and use tax revenues. The committee is composed of three members of the community with certain requirements. With three scheduled vacancies, the city posted a notice and a call for applications. The city clerk conducted outreach, which included contacting individuals with active applications on file and posting on social media. A council policy guides this process, which included a two-member city council subcommittee consisting of council members Warren and Holliday. After interviewing interested applicants, the subcommittee recommends those individuals that are identified in your agenda report. And before I turn it over to Councilmember Warren, I did want to note that part of the recommendation is to extend the term to expire December 31st, 2028 versus June 2028. And that's just to simply align it with the other commission appointments. And now with that, I will pass it on to Councilmembers Warren and Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that, you know, serving on these subcommittees is not a task that we that we take lightly. We want the best of the best to help represent our community, and we are, every time I, we have interviews, we are so greatly surprised with the amount of wonderful applicants that want to serve in our community. It is an honor to be of service to this community and to have our residents come out in droves, to want to put their name in the hat, is just a testament to what a, what great community we have, and how much they want to be involved. Collectively, we interviewed all day long on the 20th. We did break for lunch, but other than that, we interviewed all day. And together, we decided on three outstanding applicants that we are very excited to have serve on the Measure T Oversight Committee. This is not an easy decision. We took every application, application into consideration, and all their comments and the interview process. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Councilmember Holliday, if he has any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. I just wanted to concur with everything you said. We did interview seven applicants. It was, it was nice to see the turnout from the residents, that they came out and were willing to, to volunteer their time to make sure the city operates efficiently, and I appreciated every single one of them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Council, do we have any members' questions? No questions? Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
All right, do we have any comments? I'd like to ask Councilmember Warren to introduce our Measure T nominees.
Thank you, I have it now. It is an honor to introduce the following citizens and business owners that are being recommended to serve on our Measure T Committee. Miss, Mrs. Heather Penko, as a regular member, as a resident. Heather, stand up a wave. There she is. Mrs. Liz Joan, a regular member, resident and business owner with a financial background. And then we have Rahve Oiwo, a regular member and, and a financial background. Very, very excited to have all three of these on our committee. So with that, these are our recommendations.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Warren. I appreciate that, and welcome to you all. Let's move for a motion in a second.
One moment.
No worries. And then a vote? You guys were faster than a speeding bullet there, girls.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of you, and welcome to the Measure T Oversight Committee. Also, I'd just like to thank our councilmembers Warren and Holliday for spending so much time and doing their due diligence to get outstanding representatives for the city, and thanking all residents that put their name in the hat, and really, we encourage you to keep applying, and we thank you all for wanting to serve this amazing city of Marietta. All right. Moving on, item number 13. Consideration to reinstitute the Santa Stops Program, as requested by Councilmember Holliday. Staff, may we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kristin Crane, Assistant City Manager, and together with Laura Frosso, our Special Event Supervisor, we're going to present on item 13, which pertains to consideration of reinstitutes, reinstituting the Santa Stops Program. I want to note that our Community Services Director, Brian Ambrose, is on vacation this evening, otherwise, he would be here this evening, making this presentation to all of you. But back in March, Councilmember Holliday brought forward a request to the city council to have a future discussion about the former Santa Stops Program, which then occurred with the city council on April 4th. And based on that discussion, the city council directed us as staff to work with Councilmember Holliday and the community to look at reinstituting the Santa Stops Program for 2023. So I do want to say as a warning for those who are watching at home, or if you have any younger listeners, you may want to have them leave the room, so we don't spoil any Holliday magic. So, for background, from 1994 to 2019, as part of the city's annual holiday festivities, the city of Marietta put on the Santa Stops Program, which is also called sometimes Santa Stars or Santa Visits. And in a nutshell, Santa and some other characters from the North Pole and the choirs would drive around the city, stopping at designated locations for visits with the kids, collecting toys and canned food that residents were donating, and also spreading holiday cheer. And from what I've learned in talking to those who've experienced it, it was very magical and a very beloved Marietta tradition. In its final years, it was becoming more and more challenging to produce it, for a variety of reasons, such as major growth to the city's population, which meant more stops, more routes, more nights, escalating costs, increased liability, and significant challenges getting enough volunteers and staff for that magnitude of that event. And then with COVID in 2020, it brought it to a screeching halt. So, as life was returning to normal post-COVID, for 2022, as an alternative to the Santa Stops, our Community Services Department staff held five different Santa in the City programs during one week in December that were spread throughout the city in each of the five council districts, incorporating some of the most beloved aspects of the Santa Stops Program, such as visits with Santa, crafts, dancing, a photo booth, food and toy drive, and hot cocoa. The overall feedback was positive, considering it was a first-year inaugural event, and staff has been planning for that same program for 2023 with some enhancements. And in response to the request from Councilmember Holliday and the direction from the full council since April, staff has then met on several occasions with Councilmember Holliday and this interested community member to talk about what it could look like, to reinstitute the program, with more volunteers assisting with preparations and facilitating the actual events on the night of the Santa Stops. So tonight, we are presenting to you, along with what the cost would be, we're seeking directions then on, from the council on, on how you would like to proceed. And since it's now early August, we are at a critical point to make that decision, so that we can move forward with the necessary planning, depending upon which direction we're going. And I'm now going to turn it over to Laura, to share more details about how the concept would work.
So the proposed model for reinstituting Santa Stops for 2023 would be, so although we haven't finalized this, based on 2019, there were 112 stops, and considering the volume of stops and time required to accommodate all those who wish to meet Santa at each location, it was determined that eight nights were needed with three routes per night. So the eight nights over two weeks would start Monday, December 4th, and go through Thursday, December 7th, and then Monday, the 11th through Thursday, December 14th, with Friday, December 15th as the potential rain makeup day. Nightly for each route, there would be a combination of city staff and volunteers, and even with an extensive team of volunteers for each route, there are a few jobs that have been identified that do need to be handled by staff. Therefore, we need at least one full-time employee and one part-time employee per route at minimum, so six city employees total per night, plus a base coordinator serving as the overall point person for the entire night. During the day, the traffic can, for, for traffic control purposes, we will also need to have public works staff deploy no parking signs at the stop 72 hours in advance, although we have not factored that into our staff headcount. In terms of volunteers, we'll need approximately 12 PD volunteers per night to assist with traffic control at each stop, plus 18-ish other volunteers per night, about six per route, for jobs like characters, character assistance, choir, collecting donated toys and food, a route manager to oversee all of the happenings on that route for the night, and Santa. So this adds up to approximately 162 volunteers, not including the police volunteers. In addition, we also looked at what equipment, what equipment needs would be. Since the trailers used in the past can no longer be used for safety reasons, figuring out an option for transportation was critical, with safety being the number one concern. So we have come up with the idea of charter, chartering old-fashioned trolleys for each route, to transport Santa and the other characters, the helpers, the choirs, which is both safe and festive. In addition to figuring out an option for transportation, we also looked at other items that would need to be purchased and other expenses, such as portable sound systems, costumes, live scan, background checks for all the volunteers, and a way to designate the locations where Santa would be stopping. The attachment to the staff report provides a breakdown of all the costs and the quantities for various staff and volunteer roles. The combined cost estimate is just over $81,000, with about $24,000 of that being one-time costs. The CSD's special events budget for this fiscal year includes approximately $25,000 for the Santa in the City event. Just lost my spot. So if the council gives direction to proceed with Santa Stops, we will need to amend the budget, though we have talked with Councilmember Holliday and the community volunteer about them possibly soliciting sponsorship to help underwrite some of the costs. The success of this model described above will rely heavily upon the volunteer engagement for jobs such as recruiting and coordination of all the volunteers, making sure all the volunteers get their waiver forms, complete their live scans, background checks, and that they do so by October 31st, to ensure they're in, they are complete in a timely manner. And again, there are 162 volunteer slots. As of July 13th, approximately 62 individuals have indicated interest in volunteered, in volunteering, with several other groups that have expressed interest. We would also be counting on the volunteer coordinators to recruit and coordinate the three volunteer choirs per night, recruit and coordinate the three vehicles and drivers per night to collect the donated food and toys, recruiting and training route coordinators, so that each route has a lead volunteer each evening, assisting with preparing and training all the volunteers, developing a sponsorship solicitation program to reach out to businesses to collect financial sponsorships, and to arrange for the promised collateral. Yep, nope. I have this one twice. Sorry, I lost my spot. Yep, it is, the promised collateral, sorry about that. In return for the sponsor steps such as banners, flyers, and having a contingency plan for last-minute volunteer cancellations, to ensure sufficient volunteers for all the roles for the three routes of each night. I will now hand it back to Kristin. Sorry about that.
Even with all of the volunteer support, this would still be a city-led endeavor, with the bulk of the event planning and marketing work being handled by our city staff. If the council gives direction to proceed, there's still a number of logistical details that we would need to address, such as how the Santa Stop locations are going to be identified, in a matter that's cost-effective and then communicated to the public, coming up with a cost-effective and effective system to convey to the public that Santa will be arriving soon, and then also recognition for the financial sponsorships. Fall is a very busy time for our Community Service Department team, in terms of planning and hosting events. Between Labor Day and mid-December, the lineup includes the September 11th Memorial, the Susan G. Komen Walk, and ROD Run, which are signature city events, Halloween Trunk or Treat, the Field of Honor, all the Veterans Day festivities, and the parade, and then the holiday festivities, Donuts with Santa, the Festival of Trees, the tree lighting, Holiday Home Decorating Contest, and Letters to Santa Program. There's a lot of, lot of holiday festivities. And the Community Services Department, they have, there's two employees within that group that plans these events, which is why the volunteer work would be so imperative to help make this happen, if the council would like to reinstitute this. So, should the council opt to not reinstitute the Santa Stops Program this year, the alternatives could be that we coordinate the Santa in the City Program, similar to 2022, with potential enhancements that our staff has identified. We coordinate one large holiday festival that would consolidate the smaller events, though this would need to be more limited for 2023, since we are working with a shorter window of time to plan it. Or we forego both the Santa in the City Program and Santa Stops for 2023, to focus on other holiday festivities, and then come back with something different for '24, '25 year for the holidays. So that concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have, and welcome your direction on which approach that you would like to take moving forward. And I'd also like to turn it over to Councilmember Holliday, in case he has anything he'd like to add.
Thank you, Kristin and Laura. Great presentation. I think you encapsulated all the different things from all our various different meetings. One of the questions I had, do you have the cost of what the previous Santa Runs cost? I know you put in the agenda report that you had budgeted $25,000 for Santa in the City. I'm just curious if you had the cost from like 2019?
Unfortunately, we don't have that with us this evening.
No worries. I just thought of it 10 minutes ago, so I would have gotten that to you sooner. I was just curious what the comparison was. I think I mentioned it to Brian at our last meeting, but obviously, he's on vacation. And I certainly want to hear from the residents that are here tonight, but one of my thoughts in the, the history of this program, I mean, it was, it's been around almost since the city incorporated. It's, it's something that's unique, that you don't see in any other city. And, and since the residents have come forward and asked for this to be initiated, I think they deserve an opportunity to show that they can make it happen. And while it's a challenge for everyone concerned, and it's more costly, I would like to see what they can make happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday. Is there any other questions? Any questions? Councilmember Warren?
Thank you. Thank you for your report. It was very, very well done, and gave us some good insight of what could or could not happen with cost. Now, you said that the Santa in the City cost last year was $25,000. Is that, can you tell me what last year's cost was for Santa in the City?
Last year cost approximately $12,000, but we did budget this year for $25,000, so that we could add some stuff to it.
So that would include additional enhancements and whatever? Okay, so this year would be $25,000. Have you taken into consideration what it would be, what it would cost to put on a larger-scale, one-location event with, and I'm going to throw something really crazy out at you, and that's okay, an ice skating rink, carriage rides, caroling, kind of like, you know, an old-fashioned Christmas? Do you know what something like that might cost if we were to move that in place of those items? Also keeping in consideration, we still have the tree lighting, the Santa, the donuts with Santa, and all of that going on. Would, do you know what something at a larger scale of that might cost?
Well, I know a neighboring city does an ice rink, and I believe they pay around $75,000 for a three-week ice rink.
Okay.
And I don't know that that even includes like staffing or anything like that. I believe that's just for the company to provide the ice rink.
Is that during the holiday season?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
As far as other items, like we've done the horse-drawn carriages before, so we know kind of in the ballpark what, what that would cost. I did kind of come up with a list with various things that we could add, but I didn't really have time to get pricing on everything.
Sure, no, I understand.
I think we could put on a very nice event for $25,000, which we were budgeted for as a, you know, a larger event, depending on which way you guys would like to go. I just don't have individual pricing.
No, I understand. And have you, has anybody given any thought to, with the holiday season as busy as it is, perhaps doing a winter wonderland in maybe January, when, as a one-time event, instead of so many things going on during the holidays? Because we are pretty well tapped out from, from Labor Day to December with our staff. I was just, has that ever been brought up?
I don't believe we've talked about it. I think everything's always been kind of centered around Christmas itself.
Okay.
But I think something like a late-January type of event would work, potentially.
Just curious. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Lavelle?
Could you please go back to the presentation slide that kind of breaks down the cost, the one-time cost, and then the ongoing? Just so I'm clear, what, so with the one-time costs of the $24,000, what would, if I were to say this Santa Stops as presented here is going to cost the city X amount per year going forward, what would that amount be? Do we know?
Say it one more time?
If I, if I want to know how much, after the one-time costs have incurred, what will the cost be to maintain this program going forward? I think it's the, simple math would be the 81 minus the 24?
She's got her calculator out.
Okay, so it'd be safe to say for about $57,000, we can have a Santa Stops in the City Program back full-fledged, like it used to be? And maybe more? And maybe more?
And there could be other, you know, costs that we discovered that end up being recurring costs. I apologize. There could be other costs that are identified that end up being recurring, but that's approximately.
Okay.
What, one thing I want to go back to the question about the prior Santa program too and how much that cost. I was thinking about that more. And I know from talking with our staff, there's a number of things that are on the list now, things that we're having to replace. For example, they used to have these trailers. That's a cost that we're incurring now for this event that they didn't have in the past. So I would imagine that the cost was less because part of what's included here are some costs that they didn't have as part of that program.
And with the, the, the idea of having the rental, the trolley trucks, that would, I assume mitigate the need for repurchasing trailers, correct?
Correct, exactly.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, too. The, the trolleys look festive, obviously, and more than likely are safer than trailers and haybills. No, that's all, that's all I wanted to say. I just want to make sure that going forward, that the one-time costs, I know it's, it's in the packet, but I want to be clear on what that was and what it was going forward. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. I have a couple of questions. You say that we're going to do fourteen days of this. Is that correct? Fourteen, or sorry, eight days, eight days, sorry. And it's a hundred and twelve stops in approximate.
Well, we haven't quite decided the routes yet, but the last time we did this, I believe it was one hundred and twelve stops.
Okay, so we're asking for volunteers to don't, to volunteer a week before Christmas? So, okay. How many volunteers did we have for the Santa in the City event?
We didn't really require very many. We did have some. We put it out. I want to say we had, I'm going to say a dozen volunteers for the five nights. Actually, then that doesn't include, we had some staff volunteers. So I'll, I'll say maybe eighteen total.
Thank you. And with all these volunteers, can you talk about the liability a little bit of this? And the logistics of the liability of being live-scanned and working with children and putting it out there in the street? Where, how are we going to tag these people that are volunteers? Or put them in, you know, red Santa shirts? Or, I mean, how are we gonna? Great questions. So that, that is something that we've talked about in terms of implementing some new measures related to safety. So all the volunteers will be required to be, complete a live-scan background check through our police department, which is a cost that we've built into the, the proposed overall cost. And those need to be completed so long in advance, and that's why we're building in a buffer to make sure everybody gets through that. And the volunteers will also complete a waiver form so that they're indemnifying the city, too. We haven't gotten to costumes for other volunteers besides the charactored individuals. So if that was something we wanted to look at, like additional, you know, T-shirts or something like that, that would be an additional thing to, to add in. We've also planned for traffic control, where we'll have people at the front and the back where they would be helping people cross the street, making sure things are visible with safety vests and so forth like that, really trying to think through, how do we set this up in a way that's safe? Thank you. I, I know running several nonprofits and trying to do huge fundraisers, it's always an issue of last minute and volunteers. So what happens if we don't get the hundred and sixty-two volunteers? What, what's going to happen? So part of what we've asked for the volunteer group would be to be responsible for that contingency planning. But that is a concern, is what that would look like in terms of how would we have to make modifications the, the night of to provide enough coverage? Do roles need to be consolidated? Do we need to recruit? I mean, that's our whole police department. Fathers-in-law. That's our whole police department. Right, that's volunteers. That's a lot, that's a lot of people. Yeah, so it's just a significant. And it is a hundred and sixty-two volunteer slots. So there, there's some thought that you may have individuals who volunteer for multiple nights, exactly. So we're just, we're trying to come up with like, what's the outside number of, of roles that there would be that would need to be filled? So there needs to fill a hundred and sixty-two slots? Correct. Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear. Okay. And I think that's all the questions that I have right now. Any other questions for the dais? No? Okay. Moving on. I'd like to hear from the public. Madam City Clerk, is there any public comments regarding this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Let me. Thank you.
Kathy Beers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've lived in the city for twenty-seven and a half years. Yes. And when I became a Community Service Commissioner, I found out about the Santa stops. And I have quite a few children in my neighborhood that are special needs. And for me, I would go around to their families and tell them about the Santa stops and make sure that they brought their toys out for the kids and the canned goods. So I was sort of like the whole person who did it for my whole neighborhood. And when we stopped doing it, I got knocks on my door. Ms. Kathy, why are we not doing it anymore? And I'd say, I don't know, I think it's because of COVID, but I don't know. Couple of the kids have, I've had like fifteen new kids move in the backside, and they've all asked me about it. I think what makes this city special is that we think about everybody, not just the adults, not just the grandparents, but we think about their children, too. And this program, the Santa stops, was something that we did for, we did as adults for the children of the neighborhood. Some of them don't, can't come out to the cities. They can't come to the parks because their parents are working or something. This came to their home, and they were so excited. I would watch, I have a child that's twenty-three now, who used to love when Santa would come to our neighborhood. She'd run down the street before me. It was something wonderful and special. I think this is something that we have to reinstate as a city because what makes us special here in Marietta? Because we feel, we feel. We don't just think. We use our heart, too. And part of that heart has to do with doing the Santa stops. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
Alan Long. And Madam Mayor, I have a request from Lisa Long to donate her time to Mr. Long.
Fantastic. Time granted, sir.
Thank you. We're actually on a date night. This is the one stop. I said, I just have one stop, honey. So this is it. So thank.
One Santa stop.
Yeah, there you go. It's important. First, and thank, thank her for, for allowing us to come here. And Ron, for bringing this up in council to bring this back and really listen to the, the citizens. Just a couple of comments. This is one, a very unique program. While it is an extremely heavy lift, and, and we all need to acknowledge that, and Laura and crew does such a great job with all the events. We know it's going to be first-class in whatever they do. Clearly a heavy lift. But I want to remind you, there was a city goal back when I was in your seat that we implemented, connected by community. And when I brought that goal up and it was adopted, I gave an example of what other larger cities were trying to do to bring back that small-town feel. In the city I worked in, in Anaheim, they did a community survey. And what they found out is the community felt like they weren't connected to their neighbors. In fact, many neighborhoods didn't even know each other. And so from that, long story short, the city spent hundreds and thousands of dollars on programs to get to know the neighbor, barbecues, all of those things. The reason I'm telling you that is that does happen to cities that were once connected. For some reason, whether it's turnover and, and population increases and changes in demographics, they become unconnected. But they want to be connected, and they spend a lot of money to try to find that. What this event does that's different than any other extraordinary event that Laura does, it goes into the communities. It causes the neighbors to get to know each other through block parties. And remember, Santa's coming knocking on the door, maybe a community leader taking charge of their block to provide the hot cocoa and the cookies and all of those things. It inherently has that exponential benefit. And none of the other events that we do have that. They do contribute to that small-town feel, our parade being one of them. This is so much different. And I don't know what it looks like. Cindy had some great ideas. I think that may be for, maybe a company to come in and do some of those things that take the load off of Laura and do the, the Winter West Festival. I think they have the ability to do some things that the, the city doesn't and maybe do it on a grand scale. But this, whatever form it takes, and it may be just a hybrid version of the list you saw, I really encourage you to do that. And remember, the, the key is, this came from the residents. This was, the residents brought this forward wanting to see this back. And, and as Ron said, I think that's, that's worthy to remember while you're making your decision. Thank you.
Catherine Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Catherine Elliott, and I'm a twenty-year Marietta resident who has raised three kids in this wonderful city. And I have huge praise for our Community Service Department and all that they do for us, including this program historically. The gathering of neighbors, young and old, to see Santa, donate food and toys, and connect during the busy holiday season is a very fond memory for our family. Families attend together and truly do connect with their neighbors like they don't do at any other time during the year. I wholeheartedly support the city working with the community volunteer group to bring back this special tradition that brings together both neighbors and neighborhoods regardless of age. This type of connection is truly priceless and unique to this type of event. It can't be replicated with Santas in the city where people need to leave home and travel a distance. Bringing holiday cheer to neighborhoods is truly special, and I think that people would come forward if they knew that they could revive this tradition. Even those who couldn't participate on those evenings could fill roles like Kathy to alert their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sarah Valli.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Valli, and I am sixteen years old and a rising senior at Marietta Valley High School. I have lived in Marietta my whole life, and the Santa stops have been a part of my, of my holiday traditions for as long as I can remember. I think that it is such a special opportunity for the children to have Santa come to their neighborhood, and it creates such a valuable memory. I support the city of Marietta working with the community volunteer group to bring the Santa stops back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you so much.
And if I could note for the record that three correspondences were received, and they will be made as part of the record.
Much appreciated. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. All right, now I'll move down the dais for Councilmember comments and discussion. Councilmember Holliday. I guess you should start. It is a holiday.
Okay, I'm going to start. The volunteers that we've received so far has been because we've explored this idea. I think once that we actually give the go-ahead and move forward, and we, and the city advertises, and Joni Wodowiec, who's the volunteer group coordinator that had started the Santa, Bring Santa Stops Back on Facebook group, I think once we actually have this in place and the, and the residents know this is going forward, I think it's, we're going to easily see a doubling or tripling of the numbers we already have. I know my church has already volunteered to be a choir on two of the nights, and we haven't even asked them to volunteer for any of the spots. And we're close to two-hundred-member church. So I have no doubt that we're going to get the volunteers. There is a ton of logistics to work out. I don't know when some of the other events, like the Donuts with Santa, some of those other things came into place, but I assume those were happening when we were doing Santa stops before COVID, correct? Yeah, so we're not any busier than we were in the past. And as Alan said, I know this is a heavy lift. And, and we're going to be looking for all the different ways that we can make it more efficient to where it's not quite as heavy a lift on staff. I mean, I know, Laura, you do the work of ten people, but that's still only ten people. So I just encourage my fellow council members that the residents brought this forward. I agreed to, to support it here at the dais. And they've done a ton of work, and I think they deserve a chance to show us what they can do. And I have, as I told Joni and staff in our first meeting, if for some reason we try it this year and we don't get the support from the community, I'll be the first one to say the community didn't support it, so we're going to have to go somewhere else. But I think they deserve a shot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Mayor Potem Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And listening to all the testimonials and comments, yes, Laura, there's going to be a heavy lift, absolutely, along with everything else that is going on in the city at that time. Even though we are a city of a hundred and nineteen thousand people, we still want to remain that small town. When there's a, a need or a cause, I've never seen a city like Marietta come together. And the residents are the ones that have come to council. Joni came to me. She came to Ron. This was very, very important. And I did do my due diligence, Joni. I actually called previous council members and picked their brain. Even some of the residents here have sat down with me and shared their stories and their memories. And that's what's really, really important here, is the memories that these children, their families, connecting to their neighbors. As we have a journey in life, and even as I reflect back on my own childhood, there are wonderful memories of things that my community had done when I was a child. And to replicate that and have those memories is, is a wonderful thing. Marietta is very unique. We have a Veterans Day parade. We honor our military. We don't, we don't copy what other cities do. And this is really, truly a very special event. And I, I would like to see it continue and move forward. As Councilmember Ron Holliday had stated, is you have approximately sixty volunteers now. His church is going to get involved. But there's so many other volunteers to tap into. We have Boy Scout troops. We have Girl Scout troops. We have Rotary. We have many churches and congregations in our community. Because, why? Because Marietta is connected by community. We are very, very special. And I do believe that we can't get the volunteers. So with that, in addition to the memories, we're collecting food for the underserved at that time, and also the children that are underserved that may not be able to have a meal or have a toy if we did not have this. So not only are we bringing back a tradition, we're having neighbors connect with neighbors, but we're also providing a service for the underserved in our community as well. And so sometimes, Councilmember Holliday, even though we may be possibly bringing this back, and you made a statement that, you know, if, if we don't get the volunteers this year, you know, you'll think about it. But sometimes a successful event takes a couple of years to get back on its feet. And being that we have not had this event in several years and we have so many new residents as well, that it may take a couple of years for us to get back to where we were. So with that said, I want to keep old traditions for Marietta. And I also want to create new traditions as well. And again, Laura, to you and your team, I do know that this is gonna be a very, very heavy lift for you. I'm dedicated to donating my time every single night if I have to to make your life a little easier. So with that said, thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me a few minutes to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Potem. First and foremost, I'd like to just thank Ron for bringing this event forward, right? Listening to the people and I talked to Joni as well, I think, in a bathroom where she cornered me, which I appreciated. It was wonderful to spend time in the bathroom with you. And I remember this event. I love the fond memories. When something goes away, sometimes we remember it a little better than it was. So I remember taking my kids and waiting an hour and a half for Santa to show up, and he was late. So Santa's reindeers weren't pulling it fast enough. So I remember not being able to hear things and it being chaos, a little chaotic. So although I think that I love the tradition, I love the idea, I don't believe that this is the best use of our finances for our community as a whole. I think that we have grown. Everybody said we have grown as a city. Having that many stops is very unbelievable. We don't even have the spots on the street. We don't even know where to tell people to go since we have paved and done our paving resurfacing. We don't have that. To organize, I think to throw this back at Joni and to organize a board and put together a 501(c)(3), Santa Stops 101, and actually put together a group of people that are dedicated and that have an action plan to help this happen. Because I don't see this, I think this is gonna go on the back of our staff. And I do not think that it's fair to put on the back of our staff a week before Christmas. And that is not fair when these staff work very, very hard for us and that's a time when we're busy. We're busy. That's when we want to have family time. So we're asking our staff to not spend two weeks with their families. And yeah, I'll be there. I'll help. That ain't gonna, that's not gonna do it. I think that it's gonna be such a heavy lift of the volunteers. The logistics of the volunteer coordination alone is gonna take time. I think that we would be doing a disservice to Santa stops if we choose to go back that way, if we do it this year. My, I would say that we need to expand something that we know has worked. Look at our Halloween event. The kids were lined up to the mill, all the way to the corner. There was one parent that was not happy about just being there and having that event. If we did something at our amphitheater, which is our home base, that's what we're connected to our community. That's where we want to bring our hub. I think that doing something there to celebrate Christmas would be amazing. And that would be more family-oriented. I'm not gonna have Grandma go to Santa stop at the corner. Too far to get Grandma to go down there. And I love the thought of community. I love getting to know your neighbors and all those things too. But I just believe that the logistics of this is too hard. And, you know, an all-inclusive park, multi-night Santa, Santa's Village, I'm all for all of those things. I love Christmas. I have a 40-foot garage of Christmas. So I don't want to be the bah humbug here. I don't really want to, I love Christmas. I'd love to see this, but I just don't see the logistics happening. And I think that it's gonna be such a heavy lift that we don't want to break the back of our city when we're calling in our police force, which is as many as the volunteers. And I understand people have good hearts and they want to volunteer. But I know, I mean, I did the Western Science Center, Science of the Stars, and we always started with 40 volunteers and there were 10 of us setting up. So and you know, everybody here knows they've been on those type of events. And I just can't see this happening. So that's just my two cents in our discussion. I'll move it to the other two council, but I appreciate your report. I appreciate your time. I appreciate Ron and Lori's love for Santa and the community connection that it brings as well. So, okay, moving that on to Councilwoman Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. If anybody knows me and really knows me, they know my holiday is Christmas. When we first moved here to Marietta and my husband was very ill with cancer, the one thing I remember hearing is Santa's coming, Santa's coming. I thought, what the heck is that? Because I had no clue. And it was exciting. So I, of course, ran down there and to see what it was all about. There were two children waiting. I had been waiting over an hour. There wasn't the sense of community at that time. I think this is a wonderful tradition that went really, really well and has great memories for everybody. Unfortunately, at this time, I cannot support this endeavor. And the reason I can't support this endeavor is because I do believe we need some more planning. I think we're too far into the year to do it right. I want to see it done correctly so that we have the funds up front, that we have the absolute volunteers up front guaranteed, and that we have the staff that we need and everything in place so when, if we do get to bring it back, that we bring it back right. I'm not saying it's dead in the water. I'm just saying at this time, I cannot support it. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you much. Thank you for the thorough presentation and a couple of quick questions. The toys and the food that get donated in times past, are those donated to a specific entity every time consistently?
We've never stopped accepting the toys and food. We've done this the whole way through. So even with stopping the, just wanted to throw that out there. Even when we did stop the Santa runs, we did continue. But we try to kind of spread the wealth around. We give to like the Methodist Church. We've given to toys and stuff to Michelle's Place. We've given to Salvation Army. I mean, we go all around, but we do try to stick to Marietta.
Okay, and then you collect those at every single Santa stop in the past that you have then?
Yes, or also all of the events we have. When we do Donuts with Santa, we collect. The Festival of Trees, we collect. So any Christmas event we basically have, we collect toys and food.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. And then the population, I think the last year we did this was 2019. The population of Marietta from then to now, just a wild guess, has grown by 20,000 maybe? If that, does anybody have a?
I don't know.
I don't think it could be more than that.
I'm looking at Kim, do you know? Or Ivan, do you?
So I guess the 20% increase in population at this point in time, I don't see a huge gap, especially if like Mr. Holiday had mentioned, you know, he's got his church and I know the sounding bells have not even been rung yet for the, we need help, you know, who's gonna volunteer. I can tell you my CrossFit gym, if this gets passed, I have 200 families in my gym alone that would be interested in helping see this through and helping obviously take the load off of staff, because I agree with all of my colleagues. This is a very large undertaking for sure. I don't think the money even speaks to the effort that would go to the volunteers and staff time and the energy, so. I guess I will say the stars, although I do agree the event, the city park event would be great. The stars do one thing. It does make it easier for the disabled people, for grandmas who can't drive or, you know, to go out there with their grandkids. So I think that's one benefit of having these multiple stops, although very burdensome. People who would not otherwise leave their house or something in the holidays might get out of their house and, you know, walk a block away or, you know, half a street away to see the Santa stop. So I do see value there. And I guess in closing, I kind of concur with Mr. Holiday about, I'd like to see this fail first with a valiant effort, then just postpone it another year. So I think if the city and the churches and the volunteer presence isn't just astoundingly overwhelming in the first year, I would be surprised. And I think I'd bet on that side, I guess. So that's where I stand on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle. I have a question or a couple of comments. I know that this has been on Facebook because I've been following it and liking it and moving it forward and even sharing it. And I haven't gotten one email as Mayor. I've got one piece of correspondence to say, please, you know, sway your council to, you know, support this, or we really want your support. I haven't received one email, not one email for our community that really wants this so bad. And that concerns me because let me tell you, the other things, I'm getting lots of emails on. You know, whether it be code enforcement issues or whatever, I'm getting bombarded with different things. My email's never quiet as Mayor and it's quiet, it's crickets right now for this. So, and I, you know, I'm sitting here thinking that, you know, I heard two people say, let's set us up for failure. Well, we don't fail. We don't, we can't set ourselves up for failure. And I find that very disturbing that we would say we could set ourselves up for failure. I completely understand the passion and the emotion behind this event, but we cannot set ourselves up for failure. And we are not gonna go into a event to say, well, if it fails, then it's okay. That's not how the city of Marietta runs. Now, can you imagine how many emails I'll have after it fails? Right? So that's not gonna be good. So, but I'll be passing the gavel on to somebody else by that time, right? So the emails will be coming to somebody else. So it just bothers me that we would even think about setting ourselves up for failure. I think it's a regroup and push it back to our community that wants it so bad that the churches or whoever can help us put this together and let them put together their volunteers and put everything together. Now that you have the framework done on this event, you actually have the skeleton, let them fill in the pieces to make this event go forward. And I don't know how we can sit up here and justify doubling our event, doubling our budget. We're not, we're gonna, we spent $12,000 last year on our Santa in the city. And now we're just haphazardly doubling our budget to an unknown approximately $60,000. You know, to, well, sorry, $84,000 of one-time fees. And if it fails, we have spent $24,000 on something we won't use again. So I just don't want to see anything that the city of Marietta does fail and I don't want to set ourselves up for that.
I'd like to comment, please. Madam Mayor, if this was a brand-new event, I would agree with you, but this is not a brand-new event. We're reinstating a tradition that's been happening since, what, 1992? Ron, is that how long since 1994? So again, if this was a brand-new event, I could absolutely understand what you're saying as far as setting us up to fail. We're reinstating something that's been a tradition for how many years?
But Madam, Mayor Potem, we have nothing left from our, we have no, we have nothing left from what we had done before. So it is a new event again, is it not? Would it be almost a new event for you to put together?
It would be a good amount of things we would have to start from scratch.
Because we have no structure left of what it was in the past. Is that true?
I don't know about no structure, but we would have to do a lot.
Okay. Any other comments from my colleague?
I do have a comment. Is it possible to continue this planning effort, to really nail it down, to see, to get real commitments so that if we were to put it together for next year, it could be a huge success with all the dollars and cents in place from outside sources, fundraising, and really get the community behind it as a huge effort so that if it does move forward, we know what we have coming in. We know the dollars and cents. We'd have it in the bank and not have to triple our budget to try and make it work this year so quickly? Is that possible? Would that be possible?
So with the council's direction, we can work with what that would look like. I think what I'm hearing you ask sounds like a question back to the volunteer group. If the expectation would be that they would continue to focus on finding those volunteers and getting more of a commitment there and seeking out the financial sponsorships. That's a question for clarification.
And the logistics that we need to button down and all of that.
If the council direction is to keep focusing on the logistics and keep drilling in on how would we identify the sites and how would we identify the stops and all these other pieces that we've set or, then that would take staff time to be focusing on that too. And then when, you know, at what point would we come back to you and say, okay, this is where we're at?
And start the fundraising. I mean, actually get out there and see what kind of fundraising we could raise for this event so that the money is in place. I mean, is that possible to start something like that?
Is the fundraising work that would be on behalf of staff or on behalf of the volunteers?
The volunteers, on the committee.
Councilmember Warren, we have started the fundraising. We already have several businesses that have agreed to be sponsors of the event. We haven't given them a contract or anything or signed them up until after today's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. To piggyback on that and just to throw out another caveat, it would be cool to put a sleigh or something with, maybe at one of our big community events, if we ended up doing a big Christmas event, and put the sleigh out there and have people sign up or join. Do you want Santa stops back? And then we'd really see what our community says, because all those people that are loving Christmas there would be there. And then that would really push Joni's effort to move forward. And that would give her a whole bunch of context. That's just another idea. So. Any other questions or comments from the dais?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Lavelle, and then I'll come to Holiday.
Age Before Beauty, my sir.
No, sorry, Lavelle, you're on.
No, I just want to be clear, Madam Mayor, I in no way meant the message to be setting up for failure. I do view this as, anything worth having is hard to get, and I think this would certainly qualify for that. At this point, I just think it's worth the risk. There's a lot of positives to this from my perspective. Again, I've been here for 20 years. This is a very well-known attribute of the city. So what I was trying to say was, I think it's worth the risk to try. And what I mean by that is, I think our trying, our effort will be successful. Just to put a, I guess, I certainly don't want, I was not meaning to state it that way. That's how it was interpreted.
Thank you for your clarification, Councilmember. Councilmember Holiday.
If I could ask, Joni, how many members of your group are there? 580 of your group currently. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to point out that she has created this group that's 580 members so far without any advertising from anywhere. Yeah, I would like to make the motion that we approve moving forward with the Santa stops and the increase in budget.
I will, one more time, ask, is there any comments or questions from the dais? Right, and now, Ron, you, your motion will stand. Is there a second on? Are we gonna electronic this?
Yes, I'm gonna pull it up right now. I'm just, I'm just ensuring. Sorry.
That's all right. We have a motion by Councilmember Holiday.
Madam City Clerk, do I need to include the budget appropriation for that?
I am going to. It was not, so the recommended action is to proceed to plan Santa stops for 2023 with the community volunteer group and approve an additional appropriation.
Okay, thank you. That's my motion.
That's the motion.
And a second by John Lavelle?
Councilman Lavelle. Motion passes with Mayor DeForest dissenting and Councilmember Warren dissenting.
Thank you so much.
May I ask a question of clarification, Mayor?
Yes.
So with that direction, would the council like to give additional direction on the topic of sponsorships, like as a goal for the volunteer group in terms of what you would want to see them working toward?
Well, since Councilmember Holiday said he'd already started that, I will ask him to move forward with that comment.
You're asking what the?
If the council would like to give direction as a goal for the volunteer group in terms of
As far as dollar amount?
What they should aim toward for raising funding through sponsorships.
Our goal, I know what our goal is. Our goal is that we raise enough sponsorship money so that it doesn't cost us any additional amount than what we had budgeted originally.
Okay.
But I made the motion to include the appropriation in case that falls short.
Okay.
And Joni and I have had discussions on what that sponsorship levels will look like. And now that we've gotten the agreement to move forward, we can finalize that and I will get that to you.
And we'll look forward to Joni and Councilmember Holiday working forward to make Santa stops a success. So thank you, staff, for bringing that forward and all your time spent. All right, moving forward to the Sixth Amendment to the City Managed Employee Agreement. Staff, may we have the report, please?
I'll be presenting this item tonight, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Kimberly Summers was promoted to the position of the City Manager of the City with an agreement that was effective July 1, 2017. Over the years, that agreement has been amended five times. At a recent council meeting, the City Council conducted a successful evaluation of the City Manager's performance and directed staff to prepare a Sixth Amendment to the agreement, which is before the City Council tonight. There are two substantive changes and then one fix of a term that was inadvertently omitted. That item was, we'll add back language providing a cost of That item was, we'll add back language providing a cost of living adjustment equivalent to the management employees, which was dropped with the Fourth Amendment, but that wasn't something that had been authorized. So we're putting that back in since that was always intended to remain in the contract. The two substantive changes are increasing the city manager's base compensation to $341,937.46 annually, and the second would provide a 3% annual cost of living increase on the city contribution to the city manager's medical insurance after she is eligible for Medicare. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, any questions from the dais? Oh, look at you did. Oh, Councilmember Warren, you're amazing. There you are. All right, may I call on you, that you are in my member speaker. Thank you.
I had to figure out how to do it first, and I was so excited that I did, then you didn't see it.
I love it. Nobody's been doing it tonight.
I have a question to our city attorney. Is there a chance that all of these amendments, this is our sixth, correct? Could this all be put into one document at the end of the year so that we can review it and make sure that everything is in there and nothing else has been left off?
Yes, that's a great idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Any other questions from the dais? All right. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Any comments from the dais? I don't see anybody in my member speaker, so can I call for a motion and a second? And a vote?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to call on the city manager. I see that she has joined my member speaker's box.
I have. I figured it out, too. I just wanted to say it's been an honor to be your city manager for the last six years. We've done some amazing things, and the things that are on the list that are coming forward are equally amazing. But I couldn't do it without the support of the City Council and my amazing executive team and all of my employees who work so hard to make this a great community. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, we thank you for being the most amazing city manager in entire state of California. So.
I'd say United States.
The world.
Border to border, that'd be the world.
Oh, no, the universe, I heard.
There you go.
Great job, Councilmember Holiday. All right, moving on to number 15, amending the comprehensive salary schedule for fiscal year 2023-2024. Staff, can we have a report? Welcome, Diego. Long time no see.
Yes, thank you and good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. Each fiscal year, the City Council adopts a new salary schedule, which is published on the city's website and includes a list of the city's employment classifications and their corresponding compensation ranges. The salary schedule satisfies the requirements of the Public Employees Retirement Law and California Code of Regulations that public agencies contracting with CalPERS adopt a publicly available pay schedule. Staff has prepared a resolution for council's consideration this evening to amend the fiscal year 2023-24 salary schedule adopted on June 20, 2023. The update correct errors found in the salary schedule after it was adopted and includes adjustments to address salary compaction and internal pay inequities generated by the recent salary increases provided to the police and fire associations. The amended salary schedule also incorporates an update to match the compensation provided under the city manager's current employment agreement. The proposed salary range adjustments for the library manager, deputy fire chief, deputy city manager, department directors, fire chief, police chief, and assistant city manager do not change the compensation for employees in the classification. Only the range is updated. Actual salary increases are based on merit and must be approved by the city manager as part of the employee's annual performance evaluation process. If adopted, the fiscal year 2023-24 salary schedule will establish salary ranges for all city positions effective July 2, 2023, and the salary for the city manager shall be effective August 13, 2023. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from my di, from the dais? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Any comments from the dais or discussion? Nothing. Wonderful. Can I call for a motion and a second? All right, and everybody vote.
He's trying. I tried.
May, may I ask what you tried to vote?
I tried to say yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
With a yes. Anyway, moving on, governing board announcements. Madam City Clerk.
This is the opportunity for the City Council Members to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you. I'm not going to belabor everything that I did, but I did, when I put this together, I thought that we were actually on hiatus for the month of July, and it doesn't look like I was on much of a hiatus. The birthday bash was amazing. Thank you to staff and everybody that attended and helped and made it so great. Ribbon cuttings and packaging for Melvett. Being a part of this community and working together with our community is why being a citizen is so special. I, I love what I do, and I love being a part of it. And as you go through all these things that I went to or did, it's because I wanted to be there, not because I had to be there. And I appreciate so very much the opportunity to serve. This will be on the website, but I do want to go to the second to the last page. Can you do that? My granddaughter met Simpson, and she's in love, and she just loves him. In fact, that's why she came tonight, so she could see him. So thank you, Chief, for bringing Simpson to the Coffee with the City. I appreciate that. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor. I will defer my announcements for next meeting, but I just want to state for the record, I did take that selfie picture in the.
You did.
The Marietta birthday bash that came out so beautiful, so I think I have a new title of selfie taker, so.
Yes, with the long arms. Yes, perfect.
Qualified.
Yes, qualified. All right. Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple things, I'm not going to go over the list of 13 items that I put on my list. Those are on the website if anybody wants to see them. And I'm already getting beeps, so I'm already over my time. Just kidding. It's a theme. I did attend the mega mixer from the Marietta Chamber that was held at MSGC's Temecula Campus. I hadn't been in that building before, and they're utilizing half that building. It's nice to see them growing for our community. Also had the first movie in the park at Mapleton Park. Don't know if we're going to continue that over there, but we're working with staff to see what other events we can have over there. I, in fact, I know there's one other event happening in that area later this year, but we're going to have some more events going on there next year. And then I just want to say the movies in the parks and the concerts in the parks were really phenomenal this year. So thank you to staff for those, and, and also the night out. Good job, Chief. Had a really good turnout tonight. Appreciate that, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. All right. Mayor Protam Stone and I have a joint little presentation for you, and we will both jump in accordingly. So Lori and I, Mayor Protam Stone and I, were very fortunate to attend the State Water Project inspection trip. It was a three-day intensive trip to Sacramento. So the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California and Western Water District were our hosts, and we were graciously hosted by Brenda Denstedt from Western. We want to thank Western and Met for such an amazing educational tour. From the time we got on the bus, they were giving us information whether we wanted it or not. We wanted, we were half asleep, I think, and then they started talking to us about water. We learned how much one acre foot could cover, et cetera, et cetera. Lori, you would like to jump in on that a little bit?
Keep going, girl. Keep going. Our first stop on the trip was to see Lake Orville, and I don't know a lot of you remembered, Lake Orville had lost its spillway, and they rebuilt the spillway. Well, thank goodness they did, because that was spilling over. It's the fullest the lake has been in years, and it is, of course, spilling over, and that's supposed to be a video. I don't know, it's not going, but you could see the water. Oh, look at that. Yeah.
Oh, good.
So that was quite amazing. Mayor Protam took the video, and the water is flowing over these things called dragon's teeth, and the water flows over, and that's what slows the water down. They haven't had that much water going down Lake Orville spillway in, what did they say, Lori, 15 years?
Mm-hmm.
So from there, we went to the Feather River Hatchery, because we needed to learn about all kinds of fish that live in the water as well, and that will continue that talk. So we went to this project called the Sites Reserve. I don't know if any of you have heard of it, and the Sites project has been on the books since before 2001, but it, it's a huge reserve that has gone through most of the environmentals. They're waiting for the last part of environmentals to see if the project would go forward. This Sites Reserve would have been full at total capacity if it was built at the last rainfall. So we realized, both Lori and I were, well, where is the water going? Well, the water is flowing all the way through our water project, and it's going out to the ocean. So we are not saving any of this amazing rainfall that we had this year. Oops, I'm getting in trouble. Okay. Anyway.
See, it's not just me.
Yeah, goodness sakes, you started a trend. So this project will be key in the future, so if you hear about it, we can write our legislation to say that we really want the Sites project to go forward. It is very political. We learned a lot about political water issues, and we also learned that California doesn't have a water issue, it has a storage issue. So moving on to the next slide before I get beeped. The California water begins at Lake Shasta. It's the longest, largest man-made lake in California. It goes into Lake Orville, which is the headwater for the State Water Project of California. And then that lake, or Lake Orville and the spillway feeds the delta. So the delta is the Sacramento, San Joaquin Delta. It supports the biggest agricultural-producing region in the nation. So that water is so important to agriculture in our valley, and that's why we've been having some issues there, as a lot of you have heard on the news. So the aqueduct itself, carrying water throughout down California, is 444 miles and is the backbone of the State Water Project. We went also to the San Luis Reserve, which was huge, and it was completely at capacity, overflowing, and it was, it's the largest off-site reservoir in the nation. Lori, anything?
No, keep going.
Okay, keep going, all right. We'll both, I'm sure, conclude. Next slide. So we went to see what grows in the state of California. This was one of the largest melon producers in the nation, Del Bosque Farm. Wonderful gentleman, him and his wife shared cherries with us, and that one, a little machine where the people are sitting on, that actually is putting down various different types of melon plants. They start them in the greenhouses, and then they put them in very successful. So also, they have almonds, which, to the, the hand that you see holding the little green thing, that's an almond. So that's really kind of cool. I never realized that it had so many layers to it, so.
Can I, can I say something now?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
I will tell you that I had a new profound respect for the farming industry and the technology that they have implemented with, what is it, the water system, that, the unbelievable water system, there is actually no wasting of water to feed almonds, melons, and cherries. And the type of infrastructure that they put in to irrigate their, their produce, the produce is actually thriving more from the new infrastructure that they put in, which I found that was very, very interesting. And something that I did not know, but most of you probably do, I did not know that California produces the most almonds in the world.
Yep.
So I found that very, very interesting. I think our farming industry deserves far more praise than the negative publicity that they get. It's very, very important that we do support our farming industry. And there was a movie that Lisa, Mayor DeForest and I saw that was a remarkable movie, and it's called The Biggest Little Farm. Isn't that fantastic? It was just absolutely fantastic. If you haven't seen, I really encourage you to see it. So continue.
No, I love that. That was fantastic. So on that note, they do no superficial watering. Everything is done with drip system, and they put that into the ground first. So next slide. So what we gathered was that water storage is our real problem, and it needs to be addressed. We need to push the state of California for more storage to cut the red tape and stop, stop, start saving the water that we're, that's, that's coming in from rainfall, and the Sites Reserve project would do that. The flow of the delta is really interesting. I won't go into that. We could have a whole lecture on that, which I thought was fun. We did have two PhD biologists that come spoke with us. The delta smelt, which you've heard a lot about, it's a very popular little fish. We went to the UC Davis project, and they proved that the fish are so fragile, they can barely grow them in the dark with perfect feed and perfect saline in the water. So that was interesting, considering that's stopping all our farmers from getting the water they need. So they're also pushing the water way too fast down the delta, and the delta smelt can't survive or breed or reproduce in that quick of flowing water, but they think that's the good thing to do right now. So we need to support the research for less water and really support our farmers and making sure they have adequate crops. And we're letting thousands of acre feet of water pass through our waterways because storage is truly an issue. And our founding fathers were genius when it comes to our water system. You know, they bought, brought water from different places, and our water system's 100 years old, and we're still using the same water system we used 100 years ago. So.
I have one political comment that I like to make.
Of course, Lori, go.
So in the last two years, 125,000 delta smelt have been released into the delta.
Oh, that was funny, yeah.
And in the last two years, they've located three. So all these resources, this money that's going into this delta smelt, three have been located in the last two years.
Yeah.
They were tasty.
That's the best, yes. And they were tasty. All right, and next slide, and I'll conclude, because somebody's going to win the vote when this is over. And I'm sorry that whoever just lost because we were long-winded, but three days of water education from the moment we stepped on the bus. This is a group of people that we went with. They were a lovely group of people elected from all over, and we were.
And Heather from.
And Heather from the chamber joined us. She was amazing. Her Facebook posts were the best. So anyway, that is our report together. Thank you for letting us share that with you. It was an amazing experience and very, very educational. So I wish all my colleagues to please do that. You'll get the opportunity. I really will push it out for you all. We put your name in the hat as well, and hopefully you'll be drawn now that they're doing tours again. So thank you. And with that, now we're moving on to councilmembers' requests to add items to future.
We have our governing body announcements.
Oh, I'm deferring mine.
Oh, I'm not.
We deferred. We're supposed to defer them, so we could do that, because that's why we're long-winded.
Okay.
Right?
She didn't get the memo.
I didn't get the memo.
Madam Mayor, if it's okay with you?
Yeah.
If Councilmember Stone could do her announcements.
Okay, then I will defer my other ones.
Chief Malloy's not going to be very happy with you.
I know, is he going to win?
Okay, so these are my governing body announcements, and you can, you can review them on the website. I do want to make one comment to City Manager Summers. So I attended. them on the website. I do want to make one comment to City Manager Summers. So I attended the Mapleton Movie in the Park and then the last concert because I was on vacation. And I, I just, Laura and Leah are gone, and so is Brian. I want you to know, your staff is absolutely amazing. They have the best customer service. They're so accommodating to the residents and all their needs, and I just wanted to tell you that they're just fantastic. That concludes my governing body announcements.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, and I don't have any defer. Okay, thank you. Moving on to council member requests to add items to future agenda. Now is the time for a council member to request to add items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on requests. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues to add a item to a future agenda? Councilmember Warren?
Thank you. There wasn't anything to poke in the thing for speaking. I would like consensus to add an item to the agenda. You discussed the French Valley Airport and my concerns as a result of the recent crashes. That concludes my request.
All right, do we have consensus or a second to add something onto the agenda? Could you speak that one more time?
Would, you want me to say it again?
Yeah.
Do you want me to say it one more time?
Yes, I'm just curious as to what the purpose is. I know it's French Valley Airport, but could you elaborate just a tad for purposes of staff?
Would you like me to detail a little bit more? The concerns that result in, that have resulted in the recent crashes, the flying low over our residents, there is, it is a very dangerous airport at this time that I feel it needs, we need to bring it before us and have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Do I have a second for, to bring that forward?
It's consensus.
Consensus.
We're looking for a consensus.
Can I, can I ask for a point of clarification? At a previous council meeting or discussion we had, we're not having a lot of staff time invested in these things. We're just bringing them forward for us to discuss and then direct staff. Is that correct?
That is not, we cannot have a discussion on an item right here.
No, I understand that, but we're not directing staff to invest a ton of time into creating anything.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. I will support that.
Do we have consensus, Council?
We do not.
Seeing no objection?
No.
I'll thumbs up that, just talk about it for now.
Okay, we have consensus. Lovell, Warren, and Holliday, as a discussion item.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Anyone else like to bring something forward? I would like to bring one thing forward. Just for clarification for us, we have a legislative platform. The legislative platform, which we currently have and is policy, is a rotational legislative platform, which means that the mayor sits on the legislative platform, and it rotates through the council. So I feel, after going to lobby in Sacramento and some of the other events that we've had to utilize legislative platform, it would be much better if we have a designated person. So a dedicated person that can know the issues and study the issues and move forward. So I am proposing a revised policy that it does not, it does not rotate, and that we designate one person with the mayor to do our events. And, and the reason why I'm doing that is because going up and lobbying, going up and having discussions with various different elected, if you are changing that person constantly, then there's no consensus. And I think that as a whole, we would be very effective to keep that together and moving forward. So, and if we choose to do that for this year and moving forward.
I would support having that discussion.
I would also support it.
Okay, thank you. We have, and so that would be to bring back a revised policy. And, and I know that I hate to do this to staff, but our city manager, could I possibly ask this to be made possible so we could possibly maybe vote on it by the next meeting? Because we have so much coming up, and we have some more trips coming, and, and it would be very.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right, all right. So, any other requests? All right, without any further business, I would like to adjourn this meeting, but I need a motion. I'll make a motion for myself to adjourn, but I do need a second.
Second.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, aren't you happy with us? We now have a motion and a second. The meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.